No.
I call a meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Anton Wallers?
Yes.
Sobey?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dellicon?
Yes.
Yes. Citizen comments, we have the opportunity to swear in a new police officer. Turn it over to you, chief.
Counsel, mayor, city manager, I'd like to introduce our newest officer to the Morris Police Department, Danielle Royce. She comes her way through Benson, graduated Alacay early this spring, so this is her first law enforcement job here. She has worked for Swift County Sheriff for a little bit in dispatching, so she has some exposure into what's expected and how everything kind of goes on that side. But she's worked as our CSO for the last couple of months. Probably everyone's been really impressed at what she's brought to our department. Helped out with the bike rodeo, it turned out to be a really good event up there as well. So, we might bring her up.
All right, Danielle, step off. Here, read your name and repeat after me. I, Danielle Royce.
Hi, Danielle Royce.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
My community.
My community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
I will discharge faithfully.
I will discharge faithfully.
The duties of police officer.
The duties of a police officer.
For the city of Morris.
For the city of Morris.
County of Stevens.
County of Stevens.
State of Minnesota.
State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
I will never betray my badge.
I will never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself.
Hold myself.
And others.
And others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
Congratulations.
Sitting under badge, I'll actually be your grandfather. Worked for Swift County Sheriff's Office for thirty years. Been working correction, now three eleven years up in Harbor County.
Ouch. Drive her deep, grandpa, it's okay. Danielle?
You don't get off that, do you?
Welcome.
Welcome, congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Glad to have you.
All right, that's.
Now you're free to, now you're free to go.
You guys don't have to stay.
That's awesome.
Good evening.
See you later.
Okay, any other citizen comments? We have no public hearing tonight, we have reading approval minutes from six twenty-two regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes from six twenty-two.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carry it. We have the same condensed version of the minutes?
I'll move approval of condensed version of the minutes for six twenty-two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry it. We have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, the June transit report, gambling reports from the Eagles Hockey and American Legion, application for temporary on sale liquor license for the American Legion, and the tree board minutes from March and April. And I'll move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
I just had a question, not really in particular about a line item, but regarding the damage that was done at East Side Park, do we know what the total extent of the damages and the cost of the repair was for that?
I don't know if I've seen the final number on that yet. I know they're trying to get materials, I don't know, have you?
Yeah, the last we knew that they were still figuring out the total dollar amount.
Probably come through on the next audit then, I suppose, huh?
Hopefully, we're trying to get it done as soon as we can, but yeah, we haven't seen the final number.
The really hard thing is, I know they're having a problem getting material costs, you know, that's a big issue all the way around on a lot of different things.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions or comments on any of the other items? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry it. We have petitioners requesting communications for the sale of a nineteen ninety-five tar buggy.
Not much to say, they bought a new, new, as part of capital allay, they bought a new one for, for the truck and so they wanted to sell that one.
So they'll just put that out on the bids like they.
Auction, yep. I think somebody's interested in it already.
Oh, great. Tar buggy.
That's exactly what it is, it holds tar?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, the one they have now is a little bit easier to deal with, I think, with getting an out of the, out of the actual heating element and stuff like that. That's what it's for.
I'll move on, I'll move on the resolution for the sale of the nineteen ninety-five tar buggy.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry it. We have ordinance resolution, a resolution authorizing a change order to the Blue Horizon Energy Solar Contract.
And I'll turn it over to Chris, because Chris has been doing all the work on, on dealing with this and he can explain why, why we decided to add this one and, and exactly what it's about.
Welcome, Chris. Could you, could you approach the microphone, just to get it recorded better on the CD?
I gotta say, it's great to be the person again. Yeah, so, you know, this is regarding the change order for a contract, we have a Blue Horizon Energy, they're currently putting solar on three year building, as I'm sure you're aware. The reason that we're looking to add an additional facility to that is, I got in touch with their energy management department to ask how much funds they have left in their incentive program, the publicly owned, the publicly owned property incentive. The amount that they can give to their customers is set by the PUC every year. So they only have a set amount of funds allocated for that purpose. Next year, they have no money available, some of the community already snagged it all up. It's pending them getting a grant, which may or may not go through, but, you know, they said it'd be best to assume that there won't be anything available next year. So, you know, my next question was obviously, how much do you have left this year? They have about thirty-two kilowatts worth, you know, fifteen hundred dollars per kilowatt. So I told them right away on that call, I said, hey, hold that for Morris and see if we can look to find another facility that we have right to go with a good roof and everything that's set. So we determined the library would be the best place, the roof is in good condition. It has a significant utility bills because of the geothermal heating system there, it's all electric, there's no gas in that building, so they have a lot of demand. And the quote came back from Blue Horizon, the change order, it would be approximately a hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars to install a thirty-six kilowatt system on the roof of the library. Entire system fits the roof, I don't know if you want to take this, pass around and see what it looks like. It's rectangular on the roof.
Yeah.
We, we do have a copy.
You've got a copy in here too.
Oh, yeah, perfect.
Yeah.
That's colored, I like that.
But this, this system would cover approximately fifty percent of the energy used by that building. It's going to realize the first year savings of approximately sixty-one hundred dollars and that could be expected to increase slightly over the twenty years as the cost of electricity goes up. And that usually offsets the degradation of performance of the panels. In, in the long run, you get more out of, more value out of them as the years go on because of the changing electricity costs. So the, our TFR has forty-eight thousand dollars incentives left for this year, so net cost after incentives would be seventy thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. We're looking at a payback year of approximately ten and a half to eleven years, after which point, then we'll get the sixty-one hundred plus as revenue, well not revenue, savings that we should be able to realize. So the net system value at the end of twenty years would be approximately sixty thousand dollars. Again, that, you know, will be contingent on the final proposal we get back from them. But these are the rough numbers that we are working with at this time, so. You have any questions?
Great, when, when are we going to start?
So they're starting the liquor store next week.
Wow.
Yeah, they were going to start a couple of weeks ago, but supply changed, it's like everything else.
Great. Lots of pictures?
Oh, yeah.
Lots of pictures.
Yeah, definitely. So we, we also feel that the library would be an excellent site because, you know, all the educational opportunities there, we could give the live feed monitor, you know, obviously not that big of a TV, but some kind of display inside the library that could show the real-time production of the system and, you know, turn it into something a little more community facing where they can interact with the technology.
Is that going to be, is that part of this?
That is not a part of this, right now I'm looking into applying for a cert C grant to get the technology and have an IT company come in and hook it up.
Great.
At the liquor store as well.
Oh, that's awesome. Any questions or comments with Chris?
Yeah, it says in there that this will eliminate fifty-two percent of the energy consumed at this location. That's awesome.
Yeah. All right, thank you, Chris. So we have a resolution authorizing a change order to a Blue Horizon Energy Solar Contract. I will move approval of that resolution.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Next week, we start. Yeah, all right. We'll have roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sobey?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dellicon?
Yes.
Marykey?
Yes.
Thanks, Chris, for working on that.
Yes.
My pleasure.
Thank you, Chris. City manager newsletter.
Yeah, lots of stuff going on. First of all, we were selected for the next step in the LCCMR project process. Can't remember how many projects were submitted to the state of Minnesota. I think it was like a two-hundred-and-fifty and ninety-nine of them were selected for the next step, which is basically an interview. So Chris and I are going to have a fifteen-minute interview with the LCCMR committee to talk about our project, that's going to be on the twenty-eighth of July. So we're hoping that, we requested a grant of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and to continue the work that we're doing and actually it's pretty exciting to see a lot of the things that are happening now in Morris and not just with us, you know, we're, we're talking about solar. The runway project is not going to go this year. All the money's there, everything's ready to go, we got a bid, everything's ready and we had a pre-construction meeting last Wednesday and the electric contractor pretty much looked at everybody and said, I can't get my materials for ninety days from the time that you approved my shop drawings on the project. And totally caught everybody off guard, but that's the nature of what's going on in the world right now. It's really difficult, same thing happened with the solar project, they put it off a couple of weeks because material shortages and things like that. But realistically, the original project was supposed to be in twenty twenty-two and then the FAA really pushed to bump it up to twenty twenty-one because they had the money available and wanted to get the grant written and started getting that money out the door and, and so then the concept of bumping up the project to twenty twenty-one was basically centered on whether or not Riley's would be able to do it in twenty twenty-one and then nobody, nobody realized that it's the electric contractor that's going to push that project because they have to do their work when the runway's shut down and, and you're not going to be doing it in November and December, you know. And so really what's going to happen is, May, May is when this project's going to start, they'll shut down the runway and, and get all the work done and everything will be lined up, so it should be ready to go.
Blame, will that change the, the bids, I mean, the bids were obviously for this year.
Nope. Nope, but because it's, the, the, the actual period for completion is the end of the summer next year. You know, so they could start early or, you know, for Riley's, it's, it's the biggest problem for them because they had all this work lined up to do in the next three months and now they have to send their crews somewhere else and then next year they have to come in and do this one. But, you know, my big concern was FAA and funding and, and actually they said it shouldn't be an issue. You know, so. So that's what happened with that one. I mentioned in here that the League of Minnesota Cities wants to come here for a regional meeting and so I gave them kind of the preliminary thumbs up and said I would check with you and see if that's okay. They've already did some coordination with old number one to look at a place, I think the last time they had one was probably there, but, you know, the thing, Chris and I talked about this, is that's going to be right across the parking lot from a brand-new solar project that we'll be able to show off. And actually, we talked about, you know, we've had electric car shows before, so when all these people come for a league regional meeting, it might be a good time to show off some of the stuff that we're doing in town. So they're talking about November third for that league regional meeting and we really don't have to do anything other than maybe, you know, provide some help with their people that are doing registrations and stuff like that, but they put everything on. You guys went on the ballpark tour and that one slide out at Eagles Ballpark was broken and actually they found a replacement and we ordered it. So they took out the old one and that, when the new one comes in, they'll put it back up and that playground should be ready to go. And then I put a couple of items in here, just as a heads up, you know, from time to time I have people that approach me on different issues and actually had a young gal approach me about handicapped playgrounds and having a child that needs a walker and she can't get into our playgrounds because, number one, and we talked about this on the tour, Wells Park, there is no sidewalk that leads up to the concession stand or some of the other playground areas and stuff like that. You don't think about it, but if you're in a wheelchair or with a walker, you know, what do you do? And then actually, when you get into the playground sets and that's actually something the architects identified as an issue, looking at our playgrounds, is they're not all handicapped accessible and, you know, there is some pretty good ideas, so we'll share that with the park board and, and then I did have a resident that was very upset about people putting construction materials on the roadways. And my, my position is, we, we do that all the time. Normally, people will call and ask about it. If it's okay, then, you know, the police will tell them, you know, make sure you put some cones up and, and put it in the middle of the street and stuff, but, you know, it was kind of interesting. I think there was just a problem between the contractor and the owner of the house at the time and that's what prompted the person to come in.
Well, if he blocked his driveway, that would be a problem with me too.
Yeah, it would be, but I said, did you tell him just to move it? And it's like I did, but not in those words. And it's like, okay, well, that's.
Send energy.
That's the beginning. Because it, you know, because technically it's illegal to park in front of driveways, but we're not going to send police over to write tickets for people parking in front of driveways, they're going to ask them to move, and they will.
Yeah.
You know, that's normally what happens. And then the last thing I would just mention is, it appears that the German visit is going to go this year. The irony is, it's going to leave probably the day we celebrate the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. So I talked to Sheldon about that and, and originally Sheldon talked about going and can't. And so then I contacted Jeff about it because Jeff had expressed an interest in going and, and is interested in going and so we're trying to put together a list of people that would go on that trip and then the Germans will be coming in October. You know, so it's going to be kind of fun to have them come back here and we're going to have lots of things for them to look at by then. You know, so, so I'll leave that up to you whether or not, you know, you, if somebody else wants to go, if you want to fight it out, Kim's been there already and, and.
I wouldn't take the trip, sorry.
Yeah, so. Dr. Ingle, and this is a small, it's going to be a smaller group, you know, just because of the nature of, you know, COVID and travel and all that kind of stuff and, and so they, they really want to focus on having, you know, certain individuals from communities and stuff that, you know, because we brought, brought other people with, like we had a farmer that went with one time and some other people. We reached out to the school and the county to find out if they had somebody that wanted to go and as of right now, we're not hearing anything back from them about anybody that wants to attend that trip, but we do have to let her know probably next week, you know, who's going to be going on that, so.
Yeah, thank you, Jeff, for wanting to go on that. Unfortunately, or fortunately, it's my mother's ninety-seventh birthday during that period, so I'm staying here.
You have to take care of the things you have to take care of, yes.
And it sounds like their new mayor will be coming here, which would be very interesting. We've had a chance to meet, meet and talk with him via Zoom a, a number of times already and very, very nice person, very intelligent person, but it's such a strange process because he's an attorney and basically he applied for the job as mayor and got elected and then had to move to Zarbeck. So it's almost like a city manager kind of position, the mayor. And so he has to live in the community once he's elected mayor, but he's an environmental attorney that is, is very, very sharp when it comes to all these issues and they have some really cool things that are happening now with a great big huge new plant that's moving into Zarbeck and some of the things that they're doing and, you know, we're going to focus on some county stuff and then Dr. Ingle would like Chris to go just because he's our guido, you know, and, and we kind of joked with him that you're going to be responsible for putting everything together for us because that's pretty much what I had to do before, but. That's all I have unless anybody has any questions. I mentioned to the mayor before the meeting started that I talked to Ryan Molegard about a, a visit to the water plant, if you want to do that, he's willing to take a tour after your council meeting, whenever you guys want to do that. The mayor's had something going on, you're going to be gone.
I'm going to be gone next meeting, right? But I, I guess I have taken a tour of the plant, of the plant, but I'd certainly love to be on it again. So if we wanted to schedule after the first meeting in August?
Yeah, and then he'll just.
After the meeting?
We'll just.
After the meeting?
Be done with the meeting and then go there, so.
Why don't we plan on that?
All right, sounds good.
Any other comments or questions on the city manager?
Airport runway, is that going to shut our airport down for the ten week? Are we going to, do we still have the ability with the grass strip crossways or is that?
No, it'll be shut down. Everybody, everybody was okay with it except the crop duster, but then they worked out a different arrangement with the crop duster where, where he could probably come in on the one side of the grass runway and then using the, the parallel taxiway coming in. It was, it was, it's not necessarily what the FAA likes to see, but you've seen those guys, they can land those planes in a pretty short space.
In this room if they have to.
And, and then the only, the only other little quirk that came up was originally the plan was to have the hall road for the runway project to be the grass runway coming in from the township road and during the meeting, Joe Riley said they, they want to build a little hall road straight off the north end of the runway right to the township road, because otherwise they'd be going down the township road, going onto the grass runway and coming back up. And, and it's easier just to come straight across and then they barely get off the highway and they're, they're on to their hall road and the only thing is, this year it's planted in corn and they would have to take out a couple acres of corn or whatever, but next year it won't be planted, so. The farmer was part of the meeting and knows and understands that's what's going to happen next year. But it'll be about ten weeks that it'll be shut down. You know, they're rebuilding the main runway and then, you know, doing the, the extension, so it's going to be a major project.
Great. Anything else to come before the council?
I have a couple of things, mayor.
Good.
First one, I had received a call, this gentleman said I could use his name, Brent Heebner, he lives at two oh nine West Sixth Street. He called me regarding a tree setback issue. His neighbor to the east, when they got home from the weekend, they were gone, came back and looked and the neighbor had planted a tree right, not more than ten feet, probably from me to you away from his house. And he was wondering what the setback was on trees. Well, I picked up the phone and called Sue Granger and I also talked to Jay Fear about it and I was surprised to learn that there is no setback on tree planting. So I just, he asked me if I could just mention it to the council and, you know, maybe that's something that we want to look at. I guess what his concern was, is, you know, trees grow, roots spread out and, you know, he has utilities that all come into his, that side of his building or into his house on that side. He was concerned about the tree roots getting into his utilities and all that kind of stuff. And when I spoke with Jay, he said in all his years of experience, he said that he's never seen tree roots that actually present a problem to the sewer lines or anything, you know, that they're, it's, it's kind of a myth that they would go that far down and create a problem that way. But I have experienced that problem at my property with my sewer, so I know. Jay was kind of surprised to hear that too, but I just thought I'd bring it up to the council and just kind of make you aware, you know, that, that I received that call and.
But, but the tree is on the neighbor's property.
It's right on the line, I mean, I drove by there tonight on my way to the meeting and the way I see it, it looks like it's right on the line between the two properties now that he did share with me that that property is a rental unit and he doesn't have the best relationship with those, the current tenants there, so. I'm sure that, I don't know if that had anything to do with it or not, but whatever. But I just thought I'd throw it out there and I know Kim sits on the tree board, so maybe it's some, you know. Sue had indicated to me that that is something that the tree board has talked about, but they really haven't really taken any action on it, so.
So you planted it right between the two houses? Okay, that's being, that's, that's just being mean, I don't think.
You should drive by and look, it's, I looked at it, it's, I mean, it's a dumb place for a tree, first of all, it's not going to go anywhere, it's between two houses and the houses are really close anyway. And I don't know what kind of a tree it is, but it's got no chance to really go anywhere.
Any idea if it was the tenant or the owner that planted the tree?
That's, I asked, I asked Brent that and he said he, he didn't really know. He, he thought the tenant planted it, so my guess is the landlord probably don't even know they planted it.
Sure.
Yeah, typically in a situation like that, you know, well even, you know, we're talking about, you know, the guy parking in front of the driveway and the first response I have to people is, did you talk to your neighbor? I'm not going to talk to my neighbor, we have to talk to your neighbor because it's a neighbor dispute and we typically do not get involved with neighbor disputes. You know, and, and, you know, the first step is talk to your neighbor and if that doesn't work, then you might have to talk to an attorney who's going to talk to your neighbor or your neighbor's attorney, but, yeah, I don't know how you'd ever get into regulating trees on private property.
Well, I know we have setback rules on city property, on our trees that we plant. I looked at our city code and it's thirty-five, I think it's thirty-five feet in from a, like a street or a hydrant and then it kind of goes from, let's see, I'm trying to remember. I read it and it was like, if there's set, there is some setbacks regarding the trees that we plant on boulevards, so.
Yeah, there's some spacing issues and.
Right.
Sizes make a big difference, but, you know, like if you look at my house, I have a giant silver maple right next to the, you know, it's probably five feet off the property line.
Yeah.
And half the tree hangs over on my property. Actually, right now the branches are hanging on my roof, but I. and half the tree hangs over on my property. Actually, right now, the branches are hanging on my roof, but I go and talk to the neighbor and I had a problem with a pine tree and he actually took the pine tree down because it kept hanging on to my vehicle in my driveway, but um yeah, you know, depending on how, the type of tree, you might wanna be twenty-five feet in from the property line.
Was now that it came to me that he said that. It was thirty feet for a small tree, forty for a medium-sized tree and
So.
fifty feet for a large tree, so you'd have to define what kind of a tree it is, but. The, the other issue I had is my neighbor, of course, Mary Elizabeth, approached me and wanted me to uh express or take a concern to the council again about uh the park. She has an issue with cars speeding by the parks and she wondered if we would consider some sort of a lighted sign uh indicating children at play, you know, reduce your speed, something to that effect to try to somehow plant a, give people a mental picture that, hey, there's, might be people on this street. You know, children, sort of thing. And I don't know if we've ever looked at, I know we've looked at different crossing signs, but I don't know. We have several parks around town and I don't know if that's something we've ever talked about uh regarding safety for kids at play and those types of things.
Right.
If we could just put up a sign, I don't know if it could be solar, you know, with lights around it or not. It's just something to kinda grab people's attention because on that, and to her point, I live on that street also and people just cruise on that back street on A Street because there's no stop signs along that entire stretch, so.
Have you ever gone thirty miles an hour on that street though? It's almost impossible.
It's kinda dangerous.
I mean, it, it is, because I, I.
They do though. And them some, because I've seen it.
Well, I think the answer is you're talking about one place. We know and understand she wants stuff done for her in front of her house. That's what it is. And when I, when I talked to her, it's like we can't, because we actually had that same issue with trucks. She doesn't want trucks going by our house because they shouldn't be on that street and, and wanted truck signs put in that neighborhood. And, and actually, one of the things that we've done since I've been here is we've taken out all the children at play signs everywhere. Because realistically, if you're gonna have children at play signs in neighborhoods, you would have them in every single block that has a kid living in a house. And so what you see is, you see these people will put these little, little green children, they sign deals with a flag on it and that's a great way of doing it. You know, and kinda marks where there's people, but uh, um, yeah, I, you know, typically what we do is we'll sit down, we'll talk about it and, and uh and the question is, do you do it there or you do it everywhere? You know, because you have one person that's brought up this, this stuff over and over and over and nobody else is really saying anything about it. You know, but uh, I don't know how you would, how you would do that. You know, or what it would look like, but Seventh Street's the one that you're worried about, you know, because that's, that's the busy road, but, you know, A Street, Ninth Street, Tenth Street, all these other streets that people, people do from time to time mention that traffic is going, traffic goes in our neighborhood fast sometimes, but you'd be surprised how fast you have to be going to go thirty miles an hour on a road in town. It'd be interesting to just have somebody drive thirty miles an hour down that road and see what it actually looks like, you know, or a truck going down that road thirty miles an hour. Because it's, it's a lot, it has to be a lot faster than what you'd think. But, but I think that's one of those things where, you know, actually one of the recommendations that the architects are making, and I'm gonna bring it up in the park board, is the playground set that's on Seventh Street should be moved over to where the other playground set is. And originally, when we put the playground in on A Street, that's what was supposed to happen. And then everybody started um complaining about moving that little playground set, but that's one of the things the architects brought up. So if you're gonna make things handicapped accessible and more accessible to people, you put them into the right place and, and to consolidate it so that you can get the right accesses and stuff coming in. But I would, I would say A Street's a lot safer than Seventh Street.
But back to moving your playground equipment, it's like your dog park and the big dogs and the little dogs. It's more efficient to have all the dogs in one. The younger kids play more up on the one on Seventh Street. The older kids are more down on the Eighth Street, so you have separate, it's sort of like your dog park where you have a separation that younger kids can have their area and the older kids are down on the other area. So I think there's a reason that we've talked about leaving it like it is too, so. It just, it's six and a half of us.
Yeah, it's safety versus, you know, convenience or.
One thing about Seventh Street is it, it does have crossing lines, you know, where I don't think Eighth Street does and so that's kinda, makes it kinda hippie.
But they went around and painted more of the crossing strips.
Yeah, I think they did a lot of.
On a lot of the intersections.
Lot of crossings, yeah.
But Seventh Street had the, was it the three, the top redone just a couple of weeks ago?
Right.
Seal it. Yeah, so.
Yeah, so they'll come back and then actually they're gonna readjust the center line on Seventh Street, so it's actually in the center. Like we uh, we're out looking at Columbia Avenue and Columbia Avenue's offset too. So when we redo Columbia Avenue down there, you'll put it back in the center where it should be because it's kinda goofy.
Unless you're off-center.
Unless, yeah.
Spence Bond was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A positive note, that Makers Art Festival sounded like that really went over well. At the, the new priority days event, I guess. Sound like it's well attended, a lot of people around.
Good. It was the right weekend for it.
Yep.
Heck, yeah.
Anything else to come before the council? Meeting adjourned.